I'm gonna officially call the meeting to order. The fine, this is the finance committee meeting for May seventh of twenty twenty five. We go into our first hearing of citizens here. This is for. Agenda topics only. If anybody would like to speak, please keep your comments to under three minutes. And keep your comments to agenda items only. Also, keep in mind. Yeah, this is being recorded. Anyone like to speak in the hearing of citizens? Seeing there are no citizens, we'll move on to new business. Old business was we, Sheila gave an update from at, at the time when we met last. Um, so I propose we move directly into new business. As discussed on Monday on Sheila or Ms. Louberg's presentation on Monday. She went over the slides and the initial budget proposal. Uh, those slides are located that for meeting and those slides are located on our. District YouTube page and on our district website. So for those that wanna go back and take a look at that, all of those slides are shared um on that video recording. At this meeting, uh, at that meeting, uh, we had some questions that came up or some line items that. People wanted to go over and ask questions about. So for new business, we'll have Ms. Louvert go over those. Line items and then we can discuss a, a little bit in terms of the initial proposals. For, you know, tax, possible tax increases and. You know, if we, if the board decided to have no tax increase or a quarter or a half or whatever, what? What those kinds of scenarios would uh result in. So I propose we go over those items.
So um, on my, during Monday's meeting, there were several questions asked by um. Asked by a few people on some line items in the larger packet that was uh received by the board. On page eighteen, um, we had determined. That the guidance services professional, that was an extra duty line of, those are for the. The, the guidance counselors that come in, uh, I believe it's ten days before the school begins and ten days after. To close up the, the educational books for the year.
My school councils have ten days and I believe elementary councils have an extra five days, so they get paid.
And they get paid their, they get paid um. They get paid uh their, an hourly rate up to X number of hours, I believe.
Yeah.
So um, the, on the next page, page nineteen, um, I looked down and I realized that my, my. We have a calculation system in budget prep that automatically calculates from a salary. I put in the percentages of, of retirement and social security and FICA and it automatically calculates it out based on the percentages that I put in. Like thirty-four percent for re- retirement, seven point six five for social, social security, FICA med. Um, I, it calculates that out. It did not do that when I set up new account numbers for the director of special education. However, when I went back into the chart of accounts for P D E, it did in fact have me. Charging the director of special education to the page um twenty-four. Which uh Mr. Paris was questioning on the director of student achievement. I need to change those line items. That was a portion of previously, um, as, as Neil stated earlier, when we were discussing it. It was a, it was a relic of, of Mrs. Monroe and part of um Mrs. Sykes. Salaries for special education. There's a, there's a little line underneath that column in the chart of accounts that says. Apply your director's special education charges here. It's not a special ed line per se. I was. Going by what I've done in the past and they must have added that within the last year or two to charge to a twenty-one forty-one function. But I will be adjusting that. The um, the director of special education will be charged to the twenty-two sixty. All of her salary and then Dr. Monroe's salary will be charged to the principal's account because that is what her. Direct um job title is now. So that will be adjusted.
So essentially portions, the, the, the salaries and benefits haven't changed. They were just portions of people's salaries and benefits that were being directed to that line item. So Sheila just needs to. Direct those salaries and benefits to different line items. The net, it's a zero sum change.
Right.
Um, it's just that, you know, a third of somebody's salary is going to the, and back in the day when. Dr. Monroe was doing two, was doing the director of special ed and the principal. They s- they split those salaries into two different accounts to sort of reflect that in the budget. But now that we have a, you know, a full-time director of special ed, just have to move those salaries and benefits to the appropriate line items. But like I said, the amount of money, there's no ninety-one thousand dollar savings, unfortunately. The monies are simply, just need to move to different, different lines. So no, no change, just movement. Line items, if that makes sense.
Um, moving on, let's see, the other things that I didn't answer that I put little question marks beside. Page twenty-seven. I don't know that I, that I. Dated this before in previous um budget updates, but every single line item, every single number of, of a budget. Line item means something. It might not mean anything to anyone just, just looking at it for the first time. But each portion of the account number means something. So the twenty-three-ten is board services. The three-thirty is professional services, which you see on page twenty-seven. I don't know why I didn't think about this Monday night, but that is in fact our audit fees. Um, the board is in charge of getting me audited. It doesn't fall under the, the twenty-five hundreds, which is the business office. It falls under the board because, because that's how you pay for your audit of the district.
Where is that again?
That is on page twenty-seven. It's the first line, twenty-three-ten, three-thirty. It's fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and moving down to the twenty-three-ten, eight-ten, the board dues and fees, that is in fact P S B A. Um, P S B A is, is not inexpensive, but they do do a, a, a service to this district with regards to um. Board docs and keeping all of our, all of our policies in check. Um, as you know, the policy committee meets often and, and there are a lot of changes and a lot of policies. Um. Moving down to the superintendent's line item accounts, um, the twenty-three-sixty. Six-ten, that is in fact the state of the district. Um, the, the twenty-three-sixty-three-sixty, that is um part of the de Turk um. What did I say? The twelve?
Printing and recorder.
And recorder and.
Materials.
Yes. So um, the twenty-three-sixty-six-ten was the state of the district with uh, was it Rogers and De Turk? That we get that printed from, to Rainey. Um, so that was in fact that charge. The fees underneath the superintendent, the eight-ten, those are his personal membership dues for his, his contract. Um. I think that was it with regards to what I wasn't able to answer. On the night of the, of the presentation. The last item, in fact, that, that auditory manager is in fact the fitness manager. I changed it on one line item, but it wasn't changed on another, so it must have fed to, to what was printed out. But it has indeed been adjusted for the final budget. Are there any questions?
No, but essentially no, no, just explanations, no, no changes, no net changes in dollars.
That changes.
Okay. Any questions by anybody on any of those line items? I will say generally speaking, our budgetary process is, is lean, uh, the building budgets. I know some questions came up on building budgets. The building budgets have been reduced even. Every year for the past ten years. So it's a pretty lean building budget. Um, everybody's budget, including the super, everybody's budget is very, very lean in this district. So there's not a lot of. Uh, fluff in the budget. The fact that we came so close this year at a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. I think represents a really tight budgetary process. So that, that's a good place for us to be. But you know, as we move forward through the budgetary process, any questions? We'll continue to ask and, and if people need to pull sort of like what things have been charged to, to any accounts, we're, we're happy to share that. It's not, there's nothing in a budget that's relatively secretive. And then the other thing, uh, and I just wanna, I, I just want to. You know, I just wanna make this point and, and that is um, a, a majority eighty-five. Ninety percent of our budget are non-discretionary funds that are really wrapped up into human beings or. Contractive services like busing and other things that we don't have a choice on. So um, other than some. You know, relatively, you know, low, low income items and building budgets and with teacher supplies. You know, they get a hundred fifty dollars or paper and things like that. Those are the discretionary funds and other than curriculum. And books and things like that, it really falls to those items. So cutting those items cuts, you know, everyday. You know, everyday supplies for like teachers and staff. And I think generally speaking, the supplies are pretty conservative. So for us, we wanna take as conservative of, of, of an approach to the budget as we can. We want to save money. We want to continue to negotiate contracts that allows us to save the maximum amount of money. Realizing that the money we spend is not ours, it is other people's. So um. I just wanna say that generally, though, that's the context of which we work. When it comes to the budget. Sheila, am I saying anything?
No, absolutely.
Different than your view and my approach.
No, I, that's absolutely correct. I, I take line item by line item contractual obligations. And make sure that we have enough money to cover what we're obligated to pay and the what ifs. Of what might come about during the school year. Um, I would never want something to happen and we need X, Y, or Z. And have to tell my superintendent or my board that, you know, that's not budgeted. We need approval to take it out of, you know, somewhere else. So.
Um, as far as the, the healthcare costs, the healthcare been up five point.
Seven.
Seven percent. So just so, like, numbers wise, what five percent means in an increase?
So five percent in the increase, um, we, we spend about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. A month in healthcare times twelve. Um, it's over a million dol-, you know, it's over, it's several million dollars. So you're looking at.
Five percent of two and a half million dollars.
So you're looking at.
Yeah. And I, that's just some of those numbers, like when we hear five percent, oh, well, that's not really that big of an increase. But when you look at what five percent of how much we are paying out is.
Yes.
That's adding a hundred plus thousand dollars into our.
It's significant.
So it's, it's not.
Now realize that in, in the, in, in, in the contractual obligations, you know, a small percentage that is, is paid for. Through, through the employees, but a majority, eighty-eight percent of those costs are paid for by the district.
So I think that's an important thing for whoever's listening and watches this understands, like, that's just another. Hundred thousand dollars contractually added on to the budget and that's just one thing.
Right.
Um, you know, some of the other things um, in the line by line in here, like as far as like um. Um, special ed costs and those, the ones that we have in here, like are, are you, are they? Line by line in here specifically for what we need right now for our students?
They are right, right here and right now, but we do add on like say one point two students. If we would have another child go to the Bradley Center or to Western P A School for the Dev, you know. It, special ed is such a moving target. So it, it's kind of, and I, I know I continue to say this, but it's like throwing things up against the wall. And seeing what sticks. We know what we have right now. We can't guess. We can estimate. So again, if we have a family move in of four and two of their children. Need special ed services. You know, we need to make sure that we're prepared to provide what we're required to provide.
And special ed services can range between, what, debating twenty, thirty thousand to.
Up to a hundred and fifty thousand, yeah. I mean, it's, if it's an approved private school, um. Those, those rates came out this year at approximately fifty-three thousand dollars a year per student. We don't, that, our tuition rate is not anywhere close to that for a special, I mean, it's half of that for a special ed student. So.
So anticipating the possibility of one or two, one point two, you said?
Exactly. Um. I think if there were some other.
We do our best as well. I mean, there are some subsidies that we can get, the forty, the forty, forty-ten slots where. We get some kickback in terms of subsidy for that, but.
About forty percent.
Yeah, but generally, that, those slots are not, those are limited. Um, and so.
Well, along that.
Go, go ahead.
Along that line, along that line, Wendy, um, I wanna say off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me, but. Weren't we like six hundred and forty thousand for cyber charter school as well?
I think the last year we were just under six hundred, I believe.
That was, that was my other, that was my other question was how, how close do we hit that to budget each year?
We're pretty close to six hundred grand a year for that number, although, uh, you know, some of those, some of that cap. If Shapiro's eight thousand dollar cap goes through, which it likely will not after, uh, you know, the two sides. Go back and forth, um, that would, you know, we could, we could get some of that money back, but there's no. We won't know that until over the summer. Wolf tried to, they've tried to do it for a number of years and it, it just didn't. It just didn't get through the negotiation process at the state level, but you know, and eight, the, the cap. The cap would help us.
I would, I would be interest, I would be interested in seeing, and I'm sure the public would as well. You know, how many students we have cyber charter, what that costs? How many special ed students we have, what that costs? And then the remainder on the number of remaining students we have and what that costs per student.
Yeah, we could bring that to the next meeting probably. That's, that's, those are easy calculations to figure out for sure.
The other thing with the security guards, um, budgeting the two hundred thousand dollar spots for them.
Yes.
You, it's, you guys have determined like we need to, not just one.
Yeah, we had, we had an independent audit from an outside person. It was, it was actually a person that. Some of our community members recommended to us. Um, we're still waiting on this final report, but we did actually have a meeting. With our independent outside contractor. He met with those parents that recommended him. And uh, he has recommended that the best use of our money is, is security guards that you would recommend to. One, to be split between the elementaries sort of randomly, uh, without a actual, you know. Schedule or the schedule being varied week to week, day to day. And then one full-time guard at the high school. We did look into. Uh, metal detectors and all sorts of other things, but they, they were clocked, they're costly. They're really difficult to man and. He felt like um, the, the most judicious use of our money would be an actual person. And, and the best deterrent uh, for students and would be the security guard. So, yeah. We put a lot, a lot of hours into that, actually.
Yeah, so I also think, you know, I'm, I'm trying not to just think about this year too. Like thinking about years to come and um. The costs that we know are going to be increasing every year. And has, has the consortium member come back and said, no, we're, we're, we're gonna drop prices of healthcare. Or we're not gonna raise healthcare prices.
No.
Probably never.
Never.
Um, we have, we know our contractual costs go up. We know our pension costs go up. We're gonna be doing transportation in a year.
Then it will go up.
And it will go up. Um, I, you know, none of us like to have our taxes go up. I get that, but. I, I have a big concern about the future, not like just this year and, you know, getting it as close as we can this year without. Adding um. You know, as little taxes as we can, but also considering the future and, you know. Brian, when you and I started this whole school board thing, it was because one year we had a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit. And we had to make really big cuts, which were personally, I feel kind of detrimental to the district. We lost guidance, we lost music, we lost nurse, we lost art. You know, one, one person, not the whole program.
Right.
You know, um, and I guess my question is. You know, thinking about the future and our base costs. Oh, what's, what, what do you feel is the safety net to always having our growing revenue? Along with knowing our costs are going up?
I, I hate to be the doom and gloom business manager. Um, but, but everything that's, that's working against us would, would, it has to do with the act one index. It has to do with the common level ratio in Allegheny County, as I discussed Monday night. If somebody buys a house for a hundred thousand dollars, it used to be several years back, it was assessed. And we could tax based on eighty-two percent of the cost. Now we're only able to tax on fifty-two percent of the cost or fifty-seven percent of the cost. I'm. I don't know what's happening with that, you know, what, what if they come back in a year or so and say that. The um, the assessment is thirty-five percent. Like we, we can't control the county. We can, we can be hopeful that they will do a reassessment here within the next couple of years. Which I believe would be hope, would be helpful to our budgets, but it costs the county, I mean, years ago when they did it, it cost them over two million. Dollars to do a reassessment. I can assume that that's, that amount is probably, you know. Not quite double, but pretty close to, based on. Trying to find employees that wanna work and how much you have to pay them an hour and, you know, still at the horizon is, is minimum. Wage increases to a, you know, and, and teacher minimum wages, which we're okay, we're under the umbrella of that. All of our people make a, a decent salary, but um, but I'm, I'm fearful for what the common level ratio could do to our assessed value. Our assessed value is healthy. It's the healthiest district I've ever worked in. Um. Normally you, you lose a little bit of your assessed value. Um, you might, if you, if you get a little bit more, it's not, it's not very significant. To your revenues, but with the, with the, the construction that's going on in the district and it's, it's not. You know, it doesn't seem to be slowing down. Um, I think for assessed value, you're healthy, you're, you're a. The district is, is healthy in that regard, but you can't determine what the county's gonna do and what, what the C L R, with the common level ratio.
State is gonna do, with the federal government.
Or what the federal government's gonna do. We just received information from an, from, from Bridget about how Governor Shapiro. Um, was arguing with the, with the federal government with regards to funding. So um, you know, I think that, that, you know, regardless of what side you're on, the governor is fighting for Pennsylvania. And um, we're hopeful that, that it benefits the, the, the educational institutions of the state.
I, I think as far as I'm concerned, it, you know, it's, it's always a, there's always incredible duality to what, you, you know, you wanna. Make the districts sustainable moving forward, costs go up. We also wanna be, we wanna be programmatically innovative. And continue to like build for the services of the kids, but also fiscally conservative, knowing that, you know, the money that we're. Designated to the things that we do is, is not ours. And so taxation is, is, is a tricky thing. You don't wanna overtax, but you also want to create. You, you wanna bring up the basement, right? Because taxes compound. So last year's five point three percent index, you bring it up, that, that compounds the next year and it, you know, it's like you, it brings that. When you have an opportunity to bring the basement up, it, it helps because it, it, it gives you a, a, a more broad foundation of. Of revenues that you are sure are coming in, but the, the fact of the matter is all the, every cost, every cost we have. Is going to, is gonna go up. So, you know, it's, it's tricky. I mean, you guys are in, always in a really tough position, I think. In terms of taxes. We will always continue to be as conservative. We are conservatives, so we'll continue to be as conservative as we can. We don't want to completely. You know, disrupt student services. We wanna stay sustainable and, and make it so we can continue to be, to provide a. What I think is a world-class education to the kids, but, you know, also tax in a way that we, we can continue to sustain that. So I, I wish there was a really good answer to that question, Wendy. I don't, I don't know if there is a good one. It's a, it's about. Taking the information that you have each year and you as the pulse of the community, you and Aaron and Brian and, and the rest of the board members. Having a pulse of the community of what's, what's, what's reasonable to balance those two. At, at times, you know. Competing interests and factions of, of people. Um, it's difficult, but.
From a, from a.
Go ahead.
From a, from a common level ratio standpoint. I know, I know for fact because I looked into it last year and I'm debating it at the moment. If, in order to win that appeal, you basically have to go and have a um. You have to have your uh, property assessed. And you can take that and go through the process. If the common level ratio would go down much more than it is right now. That would be like a break even proposition in like less than two years. So the cost of the, your cost of the.
Appraiser, appraisal.
Yeah, they, right. The cost of a certified appraisal.
Yeah.
Would be right about at what you would gain back in two years. On your taxes. So. Yeah, there, there's gonna be a light switch flipped there and people are gonna figure it out and be like, here's, comes a whole money dump. And yeah, we're gonna lose half, half of that revenue on some very. High-end properties that contribute a lot.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Although a lot of the properties around town have gone significantly up in value over the last five years. You know, so I, you know, you wonder if it would still be a little bit. I don't know, more balanced, well, you know, even just because the, the values, it's hard to know.
It's also.
There's all different types of houses that we want to, so it could be really detrimental to some people, it could be helpful to people, so.
It could be a risk, right? So your house is assessed ten years ago and it, you know, it's been ten years. So. You go for the reassessment or, you know. If you get that appraisal, your house, it might show that your house is worth two hundred thousand dollars more. And so even though the common level ratio is down, right? Yeah, you, you, you might not come out ahead in, in that endeavor because now. Now everybody knows that your house is worth, you know, a third more than it was previously.
And that's.
Assessed. And I think that's the idea, right? That's the idea of the common level, you know, that's, that's the theory.
I'm, I'm same as, as Mr. Hawk. I think about my house and I bought it in two thousand fifteen and I know what I paid for it. But I know what I could sell it for now. So if I came, if I got an appraisal, it's, it's probably doubling cost. So I'm not doing anything.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that, it is, it's not like a home run. It, it can be risky depending on your house, right?
Well, going forward, anything that's sold.
Yes, and then you have.
To that fifty.
Right, and then you have, you have comparables. I mean, you could look around a house that's sold and look at comparables, right? Um, but I mean, I fought my assessment when I bought my house, but I know what I paid for it and I know what it was, it was assessed at.
Sure.
So I was able to say, well, this is the. So I was able to say, well, this is the value of my house because I just bought it for that much, so.
But it's certainly a factor that's an unknown, Brian, if, if, I mean, getting back to your original. Question, it's, you know, it's an, it's an unknown factor and you just, you know, something that you worry about, you try your best to speculate and get. Make your best judgment as to, as to how that's going to affect the, the district, you know.
Just one thing that, you know, we get, uh, the A P list every. Week or something from Judean, that must be Matt's account's payable, like it's what, enter check, right?
Yes, correct.
And I just went through a few, few weeks and just looking at some of the, you know, the stuff that went out and. You know, the things that. We have some control over where our money is going, you know, it's, it's money for field trips. It's repairs for instruments, diploma covers, library books. Supplies for all of our different departments and, um, like custodial supplies that might be in, you know, I don't know how fudgible that is. Electronics, so iPads and laptops, updating our uniforms. Um, you know, the, we have contracts for lawn care and our crossing cards. The phones for administrators, um, getting copiers, you know, fixed and serviced. Advertising, trainings, you know. I understand that people say, well, just tighten your budget, you know, a little bit, tighten, tighten it up, you know. There's gotta be a place to cut, but those are the things we're looking at cutting. If we're, we're tightening now. Sure, we could spend less on field trips, but who does that, I mean, you know, are we, who are we looking out for there, you know? And those costs are so, these are all minimal when you look at them individually, but it adds up to. You know, the, the two million dollars that we have some control over. But are those things that we're willing to say, let, let's just not buy as many library books? Or we're not gonna give, give kids diploma covers for their diplomas. You know, those are, I think, it's, I don't know, I, I, when I hear, you know, just tighten up your belts, like, well. You know. Uniforms, we want our kids to be, you know, in decent uniforms, it's not.
Replace them at some.
To replace them at some points, they don't like their from.
Yes, why don't they go from seven years down to five? It used to be seven.
Yeah.
You guys said five the other day at the meeting.
Yeah, I think it's five.
Yeah, it used to be seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, when I started back in the district, so within the last fifteen years, it was seven.
But I think, eh, you know, the, the community also needs to understand that those are the things we're talking about, what we have control over. And, and do we, are those the things we want to be? Be cutting, I mean, there's always the talk of our, our capital budget too, what we put in our capital. But. We have to be prepared for events that can happen, big things and things that need to be done to maintain our buildings. Um, but we also have talked about wanting to make some improvements. I would hope that we would still want to. Make improvements in our facilities to make things better for our students and. More updated and modernized if we can, um, you know, maybe it's at a slower pace than. You might normally because we have to prepare more, but I, I would hope that we are still thinking about preparing for things like that. Um. I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm a firm believer in, we have housing values that are staying steady. But part of that is because we have a great school district and we're keeping it updated, we're keeping. Our buildings updated, we're providing programming and opportunities for our kids and that. They might not get even at a bigger school or, you know, a school district that has more money, part of it's because they're small, but. Um, so. You know, I, I got into this because I care about River View and I know what my kids got out of it. And there are kindergartners and first graders walking up the hill every day to ten street past my house, I'm like, they should have the same, you know. Opportunities and stuff, so it's just, it's just, I, it's tight everywhere, I mean, you know. I was gonna ask too, like, other than what Bridget told you about federal funding, has there been any talk about? Your funding?
No, I haven't.
To dismantling of the department of education.
I haven't heard really.
So, so far we're being told that at least the funding will hold us harmless, but you know, of course that can change. If the federal government just stops all funding, I think it would be really, it would just destroy public schools, it really would. It wouldn't destroy River View. It would be a three.
Percentage of our budget contribution with the girl? Very little, three hundred thousand dollars.
Just under, under three hundred thousand dollars comes from there, so it would, it wouldn't, it wouldn't destroy us. It would destroy schools like Reading School District or Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Public or. Penn Hills where, you know, those, those title monies are really significant, they're, they're in the millions of dollars, so it's like all of a sudden. If you go into a school year, you know, the next year and you have ten million dollars less, that's really, really significant, that. Profoundly changes what you can offer to students, so.
District like Shaler.
Yeah. Yeah, they're fortunately insulated a little bit from that, it would still hurt us. Three hundred thousand dollars still a lot of money, it's almost a, it's almost full, you know, a full, a full mill is what, four sixty?
A four mil is almost eight hundred.
Eight hundred, so it's a, it's a third, third of a mil in terms of.
Currently seven hundred.
Of taxes, so it's a, it's a third of the way there, it was still, it's still significant, three hundred thousand dollars by. Any objective measure, a small amount of money, but it's up in, I would say in comparison. To a, a larger budget, a twenty-eight million dollar budget, it's small in comparison to some other businesses.
And I think about you, you talking about, do you want the kids of today to receive what? When I put my kids in school, I, I, you know, I thought to myself, I want them to be. A, a small fish in a small pond, not a small fish in a big pond. You know, they get more, um, more detailed, more of a hands-on education, right? So I think this district does a great job of providing for every student. They do a lot with, with what they have.
So, other questions? Other related questions? Brian, you got anything else?
No, I'm good.
Um, we, Sheila's gonna email, I know she promised to sort of email like the descriptions on those line items that were brought up Monday. She's gonna send those out to you.
Tomorrow.
Um, tomorrow.
Yes.
Um, we'll work on that budget at a glance. I know that Ms. Shapiro wanted to kind of work on that, so we're, we're, we're currently. Putting that together and if that's helpful to people to look at, like a, a one-page journal. Um, we can provide, and I know Ms. Louver is preparing her. Her, uh, community update. As well. She'll just be concise, but another update as well, um. With no other conversations, going to the second hearing of citizens on all school-related topics. Um, hearing none. Uh, our next meetings will be, I guess, this is our last meeting. Finance committee meeting of this year, I, I'm assuming there'll be a similar times, I, I think the meeting times seem to work, like they'll.
The March and the May were good, it was like a early intro.
Early budget, early budget, the budget meeting.
Having this, I think, after your presentation, it's, yeah, at least opportunity. Yeah, for helpful for us and then if community members were to join in, they could ask questions, so.
So while, Brian, you're okay with kind of leaving? They, obviously there won't be the exact days, but we'll kind of leave that, those, the, what is it? The March and the May meetings for the finance committee, does that make sense? Continue to do that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think we need any before that, you know.
Well, it's so early in the budgetary process, you don't have a lot of information.
So it's kind of.
Yeah. It makes more sense to have meetings when we have information to share. Okay, so our next meeting will be March of twenty twenty-six, some, somewhere in March. On twenty twenty-six on a Wednesday at a one P M at some point in March of next year. Okay, um. Have a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion.
Second.
Brian will second.
Second.
Thanks, everybody for attending. If, if there's anything that you need. You know, between now and then, just email Sheila and she can. Talk to you individually and answer any questions you might have. Sheila, once again, thanks for all your work on the budget, you've done a great job. And, uh.
That was, it was, this was, it was helpful.
You lied.
It's a lot to go through.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, but.
And I still need to work on the descriptions, but I try to do it in, in budgetary, in the, in the, um, budgetary prep side of ProSoft. But there are like three lines for each account number and I found that if you only fix the first one, it doesn't. Based on even the fitness center debacle on the last page, I changed the first line, but it picked up the second and the third line, which was incorrect, so.
It's, you know, it's tricky when a new business manager comes in, you know, you know, the same, that. The, the cool thing about school budgeting is the line items are the line items, you know, it's, it's the same at every school. But, you know, the descriptions and, you know, where money's taken, that, that's, that's vastly different, so each business manager that comes in. Had their own way of sort of looking at those things. Cleaned up quite a bit to be in line of how she does it, um, but, you know. There's, I'm sure.
Some adjustments.
There's still some tweaks, right?
Yep.
But all in all, even after the, you know, the questions on Monday, no net change to the budget, just, you know. Move, movement of some monies to different line items to accounts. Okay, thank you, appreciate.
Thank you.
How meticulous you are, all are on the budget. Are you, you take your duties seriously, so I appreciate all of you, thank you, have a great remainder of your week.